Let's call the mean to order. Everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Any changes to the agenda anyone wants to make?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Josh, second by Kate, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda is adopted. All right, we have some people to recognize. Jason Schoenbauer? There you are. I said your name right, didn't I? All right. Jason started with the city of Elko New Market in July 2019. Jason came to the city with maintenance experience from the Shakopee, Medawaketa, and Sioux community. Jason, thank you for your hard work and dedication to the city of Elko New Market and its citizens. We wish you the best in the future and your career.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, we do have. Tara Schroder couldn't be here, but we'd still like to recognize her. Tara was appointed to the Planning Commission on January 28th of 2021. And she, with her term expiring March, yeah, March 31st, 2023. During Tara's time on the commission, she was involved with reviewing several amendments to the city's zoning code, amendments to the city's comprehensive plan, and a review of several residential development plans, among other items. The city of Elko New Market recognizes Tara for her dedicated and valuable service to the citizens of the city. Emily Dornseif. There you are. Emily has served as a Parks Commission or Parks and Recreation Commissioner since March of 2014. Emily has brought energy and enthusiasm for starting new recreational programs, expanding existing ones, and has had at hand in nearly all the major park improvement projects in the city in the past nine years. Emily has been involved in completing projects such as two new parks, the upgrade of neighborhood parks, the improvement of the skate park, a new hockey rink, a disc golf course, and nearly five miles of trails. Her dedication and the positive impact on Elko New Market's parks and trails will be enjoyed by residents for years to come. The city of Elko New Market recognizes and thanks Emily for her commitment to the Parks and Recreation Board and dedicated and valuable service to the city. All right, we have some more folks we'd like to recognize for their years of service to the city. First, Bob Hanna. Where is he? Okay, maybe he's not here. Well, Bob has been a member of the department, the fire department, since 1992 as a firefighter, first responder, along with serving as a council member. Bob has served as captain, training officer, and is part of the Fire Rescue Days Committee. The city of Elko New Market recognizes Bob for his dedicated and valuable 30 years of service to the citizens of the city and the rest of the fire district. Steve? I hope you're here because I'm going to totally mispronounce your name. All right. Shawig. All right. I was going to go with that. Steve Shawig has been a member of the department since 1997 as a firefighter, first responder. He serves on the Fire Rescue Days Committee and is currently a trustee on the Relief Board and previously held the secretary and treasurer positions. The city of Elko New Market recognizes Steve for his dedicated and valuable 25 years of service to the citizens of the city and the rest of the fire district. Jay Simon. I thought I saw Jay. Okay. Jay has been a member of the department since 1997 as a firefighter, first responder. Jay serves as the Assistant Fire Chief and is part of the Fire Rescue Days Committee. The city of Elko New Market recognizes Jay for his value, excuse me, for his dedicated and valuable 25 years of service to the citizens of the city and the rest of the fire district. Jacob Giles. Is Jacob here? There you go. Jacob, as a former, excuse me. Jacob has been a former, has been a member of the department since 2012 as a firefighter, first responder. Jake serves as part of the Fire Rescue Days Committee, the Scholarship Committee, and is a gambling manager assistant. The city of Elko New Market recognizes Jake for, excuse me, Jake for his dedicated and valuable 10 years of service to the citizens of the city and the rest of the fire district. Joe Fritter. Joe started with the city of Elko New Market in October 2017. Joe is responsible for maintenance and repairs on all the city's vehicles and equipment. Joe has a vast background in the fleet operation and heavy truck repair. Joe is also lieutenant in the fire department for Elko New Market. The city of Elko New Market recognizes Joe for his five years of dedicated and valuable service to the citizens of the city. And not least, Marty Deutsch. Marty served with the, excuse me, Marty started with the city of Elko New Market in June of 1987. Marty is responsible for all types of public works activities and is an asset to the department due to his vast knowledge of the city. Marty is the longest-serving public works employee of the city of Elko New Market. The city of Elko New Market recognizes Marty for his 35 years of dedicated and valuable service to the citizens of the city. Is there anyone here that cares to speak under public comment? All right, come on up. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Paige Forsman, and I live at 26330 Thomas Avenue. Good evening, city council members, and thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'm a high school senior, and I attend the School of Environmental Studies in Apple Valley. And today I'll be talking about why we should have an organic food waste compost. Yeah, you have my slides? Okay. All right, so first of all, to clarify our terms, what is organic compost? It's defined as a mixture of decadened organic material that can be used as fertilizer. So what can go into a compost? The main ones, the main things that can go into it are fruits and vegetables, hard cheeses and butter, eggs, coffee grounds, meats, and a lot of other things. As a general rule of thumb, the things that come from a plant or an animal can go back into the soil. And then things that can't be composed are yard waste, plastic bags, pet waste, recyclable glass, plastic, metal, and milk. So why should we collect our food waste? If we had a compost, it would reduce the amount of waste going into landfills. According to the USDA, food waste accounts for 30 to 40% of the United States food supply, which means we're throwing about at least a third of our food away. And food scraps and garden waste, which are compostable, make up 28% of what's thrown away. And most of that waste comes from the consumer level, which is us. So that means about 119 billion pounds of food waste is produced each year in the United States. Having a compost would also help us reduce methane emissions. So when organic materials naturally decompose, it's called aerobic decomposition because it's exposed to oxygen when it breaks down. And on the other hand, in a landfill, when everything is compacted together, it's not exposed to oxygen, and when it breaks down, it produces methane, which is 25 times more potent than carbon dioxide, and that makes it a huge contributor to climate change. And the EPA estimates that more food waste is put in landfills than any other single material, and these landfills are the third-largest human-related methane emitters. Elko New Market is part of Green Step Cities, and we have been on step two since 2016. So it may be time to take a couple more actions to help us go up to step three and beyond, and setting up a compost program would help us do so. Of best practices, best practice 22.5 is source-separated organics, which is a compost. We have made progress of the eight practices and best practice number 22. We've done one, two, three, four, and six, but not number five, which is the compost. And these, this is a screenshot from the Green Step Cities website. We could have a level one, two, or three star organics program. Level one is just having an organic compost, and then level three is, has more specifics like having a certain percent of residents and businesses participating in it. How to set up the city compost? People would collect their compost bins in their homes, and there are many different types of compost people can have. Some people may be concerned that it'll smell, but it won't smell any worse than a regular garbage can. So as long as you have a lid over it, you'll be good. And you would also need to have a certified compostable bag, or even just a paper bag is compostable. And then people could drop off their bags at the compost site. On the right, there is a picture of a compost site in Dakota County. They have a really good and efficient program. And then there are some compostable bags on the left, which would hopefully be available at the compost site for people to use and take. And these are my sources. The, at the picture at the bottom there is a link if you guys want to watch a 40-minute video that Dakota County made. And it's like about their program and how they run it, and it's a really good resource to learn more. And one more slide. All right, thank you for your time and allowing me to speak today. Please reach out with any questions or concern you have, and I would greatly appreciate if you would consider how a compost can affect our community and environment. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Anyone else care to speak under public comment? Come on up, please state your name and.
That's a hard act to follow, though. I will say, my name's Roslyn Toussaint. I live at 4636 Cedar Lake Road in St. Louis Park, Minnesota. We actually do have a compost program in our city, and it's phenomenal. So I would kind of piggyback off of what Paige just shared with you. I today am here to talk about another resource we all love talking about these days, and that's water. So this right here represents all of the water on the planet Earth. This little container shows you all of the fresh water on planet Earth. Now, a lot of that is trapped in icebergs or is polluted. So this right here shows you the amount of potable fresh water that we have available on planet Earth. Pretty stark contrast. Well, you know, I certainly don't live in this community, and I do have a career in municipal government, so I'm definitely empathetic to the needs of a small but growing community for investment in economic development. I don't know that the Niagara bottling proposal is the way to achieve that. This sets a terrible precedent for our state. Having an out-of-state company come in siphon off our greatest natural resource for profit. 310 million gallons of water a year would require 2.48 billion plastic bottles annually. So again, what this project is inevitably proposing would require 2.48 billion plastic bottles generated per year. Minnesota's unemployment rate is at a historic low. Expansion in bedroom communities is booming. So I really urge the city council to reconsider alternatives for development in this community. I don't know that 2.48 billion plastic bottles is what Elko New Market wants to be associated with. So thank you for your time, and.
Anyone else care to speak in the public comment? You're not getting up to speak, no? All right, with that, we'll close public comment. Anyone have any items on consent agenda they would like to hold?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Josh, second by Kate, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consent passes. All right, we have a couple lists of office. Where's the, oh, you have it, all right. Don? The room is empty now, I lost track of everyone else. Ready?
Yep.
Raise your hand. I state your name.
I, Don Burnham.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution.
To support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And to discharge faithfully.
And to discharge faithfully.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Parks and Recreation Commission.
Of Parks and Recreation Commission.
Of the city of Elko New Market.
Of the city of Elko New Market.
Minnesota.
Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment.
To the best of my judgment.
And ability.
And ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
Mike? I state your name.
I, Mike Sutton.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution.
To support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the state of Minnesota.
The state of Minnesota.
And to discharge faithfully.
And to discharge faithfully.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Parks and Recreation Commission.
Parks and Recreation Commission.
Of the city of Elko New Market.
The city of Elko New Market.
Minnesota.
Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment.
To the best of my judgment.
And ability.
And ability.
So help me God. So help me God. Okay, with that, we'll move on to general business, as we have no public hearings tonight. Night. And the first thing is the water supply plan.
City engineer Rich Revering will review that item, Mr. Mayor.
Oh. Well, so you've had the requested updates in your packet. We've responded to some questions. The water supply plan is a document that's required by the DNR and the Met Council, typically done hand-in-hand with our comprehensive plan update every 10 years. So it is currently, we currently have a plan. It's valid and acceptable to the DNR and Met Council. The city council asked us to update it, considering potential large user and other issues as it got reviewed, to try and reflect more current data. And so that has been completed and is in your packet. I presume the public has seen it as well through the council packets online. So rather than walk through, it's a lengthy document. I suggest I stand for any questions or participate in any discussion that you want to have.
Okay. I know I have questions. I wasn't sure if we were going to go through it, not necessarily page by page, but, well, might not be the worst idea to go through it in some, some degree.
I can give you a little more of an overview. The document, it's called a water supply plan. Its original title, when it was first started to be required of cities, and every city in the state has to prepare one that serves municipalities. It was called an emergency and conservation plan. So its real purpose is to identify, you know, kind of how much water you expect to use, where it's going to go, what's your historic data, what's your projected data? It gets into things like what kind of improvements do you need to expect based on these projections? How can you, what kind of measures can you and will you take to try to reduce your average consumption for your residents and businesses over time? What are you going to do in the event of an emergency? Kind of the priorities, prioritize, excuse me, priorities of who gets water first, second, third? So this spells out all of those things. As far as that last question, it's residential is first, and then goes down to nonessential uses, including commercial, industrial. And that's laid out on the table if you wanted to get into that. I don't, I mean, ours is pretty typical. We've reviewed some other ones as we did this update, similar issues. How do you manage to have people, you know, use less water? What are the most effective methods? And they're all pretty similar. It's really, what we've chosen to do, as you know, is focus on the cost of the water and escalating as people use more, especially for irrigation or nonessential purposes.
Okay.
So I.
Well, we can.
Get into specific sections if you like, but.
Yeah, well, I think, I know I have some questions, Josh has some questions, Kate, I'm not sure if you have questions.
I just have a clarification that I would like to state, but.
Do you want to go first, then?
Well, I can wait till we get down to it.
Well, I can have a general one, maybe before we get sections. So can, from my brain and maybe for others, how does this tie into, if at all, with like our significant user ordinance, significant user agreements when it comes to that? It seems like some of these, some pieces maybe are complementary to, or beef up, or maybe tackle different things, different pieces of like water usage, conservation, or, because even the turning on, turning off, or restrictions and stuff. It seems like there's pieces in a couple different documents. It seems like this would kind of tie some of it together, but maybe not capture it all. Is that a?
I think it captures it all, but it's maybe a little more general because its purpose is really a supporting document to the comp plan, information for the DNR and the Met Council. The ordinance is more, just has more teeth to it and more direct policy implications for the city to use as it reviews applications for large users, for example. It gets much more detailed than this plan would be about what type of things we'll look at to approve those or deny them. But the priorities and stuff are all consistent as far as who gets water first, second, third, and that's actually consistent with state law as well.
And we do reference the water supply plan in the ordinance with regards to water conservation in the event of emergencies and the priorities that are identified within the water conservation plan. Or, excuse me, the water supply plan.
So council, how do you guys want to approach this? Should we just take turns firing different questions out?
Can we scroll through or whatever?
Well, I don't think we're going through the document necessarily, page by page.
Why don't you just start with your questions?
Yeah, I, I mean, just as a point of reference, I'm looking at page 33 of the PDF plan. And just one thing that caught my eye when it looks at the table under the trout stream. One of our mitigation plans is to increase conservation. I just, like, what are some things we would do to increase conservation that would affect that?
Well, we already do things like odd-even watering, but you might further restrict.
Can you just talk in your microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was saying, we already do things like odd-even watering, but you could go further with, you know, more restricted watering, one or two days a week, that type of thing. Generally, focus on non-essential uses when you're talking, trying to promote conservation.
So it would just be expanding on things that we're already doing, is what you're saying?
Most likely, yeah.
Okay.
On that, excuse me. Is it cool if I jump in?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, no, so on that same page, just underneath, under the aquifer one, and maybe this was one of the ones that emailed me about as I'm thinking about it. But we don't have it checked of a risk assessed through the proximity piece for the aquifer. Would we want to consider checking that box since we're going to be doing aquifer testing? Or maybe, like, how does that tie to this plan? And is that a potential risk?
It actually probably could be checked because some of the analysis done by our hydrogeologists did look at monitoring, well, they're not monitoring wells, but they're other wells within five miles. But we don't have any pure observation wells other than the New Market well, which has shown no change. It's been dead flat for, since we put it in.
Yeah, no, and I.
So far from the other wells.
And I read this as, it's, you know, this is the risk that we've assessed it through, and we haven't technically maybe checked that box yet, but it seems like we will be checking that box, potentially based on what the recommendations or guidance is by the DNR.
We expect that we probably will be doing some sort of a pumping test as part of our appropriation permit amendment, and that will require monitoring whether we install a new well or use an existing well that we temporarily take out of service as an monitoring well. So we'll be recording, and we'll also probably monitor some nearby wells to see if there's an impact during that pumping test. So depending on the outcome of that, well, it would be checked either way then now, after we've actually done it. To this point, we haven't.
Right. Right.
I have a question as it relates to page forty where it's talking about the, um, the short-term emergency demand reduction potential.
One moment.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I, so I see where residential would drop from, you know, two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand to a hundred-and-twelve-thousand. But for commercial industrial, it's such a slight drop-off. I'm just curious what the rationale is.
It's actually the reverse. What the table is telling you is the demand reduction potential. So we think you could drop usage by a hundred-and-twelve-thousand gallons per day for residential, drop industrial usage by four-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand gallons a day. So it's, it's the flip.
It's brilliant. I didn't even catch that before, the way that you just read that now.
So that's what I was.
So, so commercial, industrial, institutional could be reduced all the way down to twenty-five-thousand, um, technically as it, I mean.
You're gonna wanna keep a vet clinic open, maybe a gas, you know, there's gonna be some if you really, if you can.
Sure.
So it's not, you wouldn't drop to zero, but the cuts are far bigger in those non, in the commercial industrial category than they are in residential.
Okay, all right, that makes sense. I, I guess, well, I mean, it makes sense, but I still would like to understand. I mean, just cause the numbers are so, so big. So four-hundred-and, four-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand is based on what?
Uh, I mean, it's essentially Niagara's stopping production.
It's Niagara stopping production?
That's, that, that's equivalent to that number. Now, it may not necessarily be that, but that's the equivalent in terms of scale. We don't have currently four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand gallons per day of industrial, commercial usage. So we, one of the things we were requested was to reflect a significant user. We chose data that we have based on a current applicant to reflect in the plan. So under, you know, an extreme emergency where we just don't have the water or we were ordered to, uh, cut those types of things, that's the demand reduction potential. We think there may be other businesses that would also be asked to curtail usage, maybe, um, leisure manufacturing, you know, if there's other ones. But, um, there'd be some essential ones that you'd probably wanna still have. So there's gonna be, you can't cut to zero.
So, okay, so let me, I guess let me ask this way. If we were in a water crisis and we had to put in some heavy restrictions on water, would Niagara still be able to operate and pump water and still sell it out?
It really depends on what the crisis is.
But do we have the ability to say no to that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Okay, that was kind of what I was going after.
That was one of the clarifications that I was gonna talk about is that, um, residential is thirty-eight percent decrease and then ninety-four percent for industrial. And with forty-nine businesses listed in the area, um, in the city, it would be five-hundred-and-ten gallons per day is all that commercial and industrial would be allowed to use. So.
On average.
On average.
Depending how, you know.
Yep.
There, there's gonna be, th- these are all on average. There's gonna be certain businesses you may want, you want a gas station running, you might wanna, s- a vet clinic or funeral home or something.
So would it make sense to, um, to break that out then between, you know, industrial versus commercials? Uh, getting more granular, I guess, instead of just a row that kind of row that clumps them all together to divvy it out differently?
We populated the DNR's template, but the council, if it chose to, could certainly request more. I mean.
I would recommend no because the, the myriad of possibilities is large. And the more, we wanna assign a level of priorities, but the specifics will need to be dependent upon the circumstances at the time. I would not recommend getting more granular, but that's council's determination.
No, I, I, I mean, and I don't wanna, I mean, I'm not suggesting, or I don't think we are suggesting, you know, making it more complicated, but I think, um, it, it doesn't make sense to treat everything the same. Now, I, I wouldn't say we list out, you know, gas stations get this amount, restaurants get this amount, you know, whatever gets this amount, but maybe in my brain, it's a, a significant industrial user, water user does this, the rest of the businesses and/or industrial, institutional, whatever, get this, so.
There should be some.
Some differentiation.
In the text at the top of the page, the first sentence says, "Water used for human needs at hospitals, nursing homes, and similar types of facilities should be designated. High priority to be maintained in an emergency." And that's certainly what we would follow without going.
Can you hear my microphone?
Oh, without going, I'm gonna move this thing. Without going into business names and locations and things that, you know. So I, I think there's, it's stated as, it, it's part of the template, but it's certainly what we would follow if, if we got into a situation like that.
I guess I, I would want it somewhere said that if we're in a water emergency, and I don't know how we define that water emergency, but I just don't like the idea of at the same time being in a water emergency, pumping water and selling it off. So I don't know how we do that, how we document that in the plan, if that's what the rest of the council feels as well.
Could it be, um, designated if a business uses less than this amount? Or if you use more than this amount, then it's tiered that way?
Well, I think if, you know, depending on, it's, if it's an emergency that requires that kind of cut, the first place you're gonna go is to your largest users. If they can operate at ten percent, maybe there's room to keep some others. I'm not sure that's true. They're probably more of a, you know, if they cut too much, why bother running? They gotta, all this, I, but I don't know those details of how they operate. And we weren't specifically thinking about how any particular business or industry would respond to this, uh, more in generalities of, you can't cut all of it, but you could, could cut some substantially. Uh, if we're in that kind of a situation, there's probably not gonna be much choice of, we want you to dial back ten percent. It's gonna be something broke and we can't provide water, especially that much, if that makes sense.
No, and I, and I hate to, I don't wanna, I'm not trying, I'm trying to figure out how to phrase this in a, in the best way possible, not kicking the can, but, you know, I, I mean, I think these are all, I mean, we can, I guess, what, the intent, the timing, what, what, what is the best approach to, to addressing this? Um, I think, I mean, we could continue to go through a variety of different questions. You know, I don't know if I will feel comfortable, you know, voting to approve this, uh, yet, uh, without, you know, seeing what some of these changes might be or even getting more of that information. Um, so would it make sense to, I hate punting on crap too. I mean, it's just, it feels like we're not doing our job, but I also do feel like we're doing our job by getting more information, asking more questions, having a more thoughtful discuss, and I'm not trying to imply that this is not a thoughtful discussion, cause we can make it as thoughtful as we want. But, um, just having some, I mean, I, I would like to look into, you know, how do we differentiate between some of these different things and have that discussion, you know? But I guess.
Like in a workshop setting or something?
Like a workshop or, or does it make sense to make some of these, I, some of these changes? See, I just, I don't know if I feel comfortable approving it anyway, but let's hypothetically say then we approve it the way it is and then we come back to it and we keep revising it. That seems more work and more energy and maybe inefficient to chip away at it versus trying to tackle some of these issues just more at once versus, I don't know, I, I guess I don't know what other people's preferences are to doing it.
If, if I could, I'm, as I'm listening to the conversation, I'm a little unclear what additional information that the council's looking for. And I would also like to suggest, um, that as you like, as you look to refine the plan, you also don't wanna tie the hands of future councils who at that time may need to make decisions. I guess maybe a question for right now would be a question of the city attorney as to how much discretion does a future, and I think the intent is that you wanna give a future council leverage, but we may be working harder than we need to because a future council may have all the leverage and discretion that they need to make the decisions they need to make at the time. And I guess that would be a good question for the city attorney.
Right, I think as long as. Okay. I think as long as the, uh, authorization is broad enough, it, it will not bind you or future councils. The more you get into specific requirements, um, it may be more difficult depending on the type of emergency that you're facing. So sometimes you're better not tying your hands or the hands of another council in, uh, providing guidance and giving more discretion.
Well, again, I, I'm gonna echo a little bit of what Josh said. I'm not, I don't know that I'm terribly comfortable voting on this tonight either and without, without seeing something that clearly states in black and white, we can restrict the sale of water. And maybe those terms and which, you know, what are the different triggers to where we would actually go to Niagara and say you have to shut down or something like that? I don't know. I think we should, we should have that ability and it should be spelled out specifically in our, in our water supply plan. So if that's something that we wanna talk about at a future meeting at a workshop or something like that, I'm perfectly fine with that. That was my biggest overriding concern with all of this. I mean, most of the stuff that's in here is kind of almost logic administrative, um, way, but I think that's something I'd like to see singled out. Uh, does anyone else have questions? I mean, we can kind of go through different questions and kind of get a map of the things we would want clarified.
Well, yeah, no, I mean, and I, and I shared some of the questions that I have. And, and some of them were answered, some of them I think we still just needed to talk through. But it gets me back to the, the question I had at the beginning too. Where does the, the, you know, significant user agreement tie into this? And maybe there is some teeth and some more clarity in there of doing some of that stuff that you were talking about. And, and you know, if that's clear and then we tie it back, and then that's where I'm wondering how it's all tied together. So if we don't need to, you know, spell it out in here because it wouldn't make sense to because of everything that Andrea just said, then, and we can keep it in the significant user agreement contract, whatever, and the ordinance, and we have the protections in place and we can do it, great. But in my brain, like, it's just where it's just hard to piece it together and I didn't have, you know, a side-by-side, have the ordinance here, have the water supply plan here, the, the agreement here, and actually kind of talk through it. I think that would be super helpful to kind of just see how it all ties together and make sure that there are as little gaps as possible. Maybe there are none and maybe we're completely good. But I think that would be helpful for me anyway. And I guess, I don't know if I care if I tie the hands of future councils either necessarily because I see how easy it is for us to make changes anyway. So assuming that we can, you know, not massively screw it up, um, you know, somebody can, I mean, we, we could, I, I'm sure. But, you know, we could also fix it and, um, depending on the time or the situation, I think future councils could say, well, these guys are a bunch of idiots anyway and, you know, completely get rid of it. But.
So you're looking for where your authority to restrict usage is encoded?
I think that's one, yeah.
That's my position, yeah.
And my understanding is it's already in existing ordinance.
It's in the ordinance, it doesn't. It just says the city council can decide.
Okay. I mean, I'm, I'm not gonna look to read the ordinance right now, but.
Whenever the city council determines, in the public interest, the city council may by resolution further limit water use times hours during which water may be used from the city's water supply by giving notice by publication or by posting.
And what if Niagara objects to that and says it's causing them harm and tries to sue the city? I mean, I don't know.
Any, any entity could make the same claim at any time under the current ordinance.
True, but Niagara also has a history of taking cities to court. I'm not saying it's.
They, they actually do not. That, they actually do not.
Yes, they do.
They do, and I'm not trying to really get in the middle of that, Tom. I guess my point is, I, I really, I'm not comfortable with that not being included in the water supply plan. So if, even if it's just a small thing to make me happy somewhere, maybe we can insert that somewhere in the water supply plan.
Maybe a reference to.
We can certainly take a look at that and bring something back at the next council.
Thank you. That was the biggest point I had. I mean, there's other things that I, I think we need to talk about. I mean, I'd like to revisit the water rate structure. I don't know that that's necessarily something that has to do directly with the water supply plan, cause we do that separately anyway. But really, those are the two things that were in my mind, so.
Are we left vulnerable at all with not making updates or having a kind of impending status? I mean, just from, I mean, I'm guessing we're not, but it's a really stupid question.
You have a current official water supply plan that is satisfactory for the applications you've made.
Okay. Josh, do you have any other points you wanna hit on?
No, I mean, I think, I mean, I think, like I said, I sent in a bunch of different just thoughts, comments, whatever. Um, and, and there are pieces of, especially the updates. So like, that's where I was like, huh, like, the updates I do think were great and we updated some of the data in, in here. Uh, it reflects that trends maybe are starting to change a little bit. So I think, um, you know, even taking a closer look at that, I do really think spelling out, uh, um, the differences in the types of business, industrial, commercial and institutional and whatever, I think that would, I think would be helpful, uh, especially if there's only one massively huge industrial user. Um, I don't think the rest maybe should be clumped into that group, um, or they're separated out and then the rest are any other industrial, commercial or business or whatever, um, users. And I don't know how you do that well.
Or definition in table eighteen perhaps, something like that?
What page was table eighteen?
Forty-four, maybe? Try forty-four.
Page forty.
Forty.
Yeah.
That's close.
Yeah, but, well, no, and thank you too for the clarification because it looked like it only got reduced by twenty-five and the other one got reduced by a hundred-and-sixty-eight or seventy-eight, whatever it is, seventy-eight. I don't know, I, I feel like we have time. I mean, I feel like this is not something we need to rush unless others disagree, um, which if.
This was a council request, um, so I, I don't see it being urgent.
So is, to the rest of the council members, is this something you wanna have a workshop on? Is this something that you want, how do you wanna proceed?
I would love, I mean, I'm an idiot when it comes to this stuff. I'm trying to pretend like I know what I'm talking about, but, I mean, I know nothing.
I would love to see this, the ordinance, the significant user, all side-by-side so we can see how they work together and see if there's any gaps that we need to fix or make certain that all of our ducks are in a row so that maybe it's not Niagara that comes in, maybe it's another large water user for something or whatever, you know, another company that's gonna use a large amount of water. We need to make certain that it's done correctly now instead of saying in ten years we should've done that.
So just looking at the calendar, we have a workshop scheduled on our calendar for the next council meeting. Do we actually have anything for that workshop, Tom?
We can, this could be the item very easily.
Okay, let's plan on that and then, um, let's continue this item until the next meeting and we can still have this as a general business item on that meeting.
Can we also go over the rate structures?
You wanna do the rate structures at the next meeting?
Can we just talk about it at the workshop along with this?
Yeah.
What does the council want to know about the rate structure so that we can be prepared for that discussion?
Well, personally, I've never, in, in all the times that we've talked about, uh, water rates, we've never talked about conservation or at least it hasn't been something that's been of my, been of my mind when we've been talking about it. It's always been, how do we, how do we lower water rates or keep the water rates, you know, from rising too much? Cause that's been the narrative for the last ten years since we've got the water treatment center. So I guess I'd like to understand better how we factor in conservation into that. Cause I saw that was part of the, it should be part of the process.
Oh, God, good comment. Cause, yeah, uh, not that the other ones weren't good comments. No, there was a spot at the beginning too. Um, uh, and sorry, not taking away, but the, the water conservation section, part three, um.
Page are you on?
This is like ten basic steps for completing the ten-year water supply plan, page seven. The water conversa- conservation section may need discussion with the water department, council, planning commission, if your community doesn't already have an active water conservation. I mean, just to understand. I mean, just to understand what is ours, what could it be, what are others, and maybe that fits into the tiered rate struc- or the rate structure piece, but that got me thinking of that section. I thought that'd be a good idea for a workshop at some point.
And Kate, was there anything that you might have had? Okay. So that'll be the plan for the workshop, and then I'll make a motion to continue. I don't know if I, is a motion needed to continue the discussion on the water supply plan for the next meeting? If so, I just made that motion.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Kate, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Matters continued. Next item, resignation of council member Shenke. So the question here is, what do we, what do we wanna do with that vacancy?
Good riddance, I mean, oh, he's online, he's online, so that's why I said it, completely joking. So can he be unmuted, or, you don't have to unmute him. I would say he can unmute himself, right? So we can say whatever we want, all right, excellent. Just kidding, Bryce.
I know in the past, he only has, what, a year and a half left?
Yep.
I know in the past, we've opened it for applications and we've interviewed. That is what I would be in favor of.
So normally I am in favor of that, although I'm not in this case. We're gonna have more Niagara votes and more Niagara stuff, and we're gonna have more Niagara stuff in front of us, and I don't know how we find a candidate that can actually participate in that discussion that isn't already swayed one way or another. I, I think we'd be opening the risk of someone coming in to a council spot and already having an, an agenda one way or another. And I have some concerns with that. And I think we, I think there's probably some people we could directly appoint if we wanted to. Now, is that something?
So to be devil's advocate. You, you're afraid to let the public come in and apply, but we wanna appoint somebody, well, we could have a hidden agenda, because we all wanna appoint this one person. I'm just trying to be devil's advocate, because that might come up as a question.
I absolutely pause it, it'll come up as a question. So my thought was take someone from the planning commission, someone that's already familiar with everything, that's had to take an impartial role on this previously.
That's not a bad idea.
I also think, though, it's, this is probably a big enough thing, we should have a full council with Amanda here to really make a final decision on that. But, I don't know, I've always been, I've, I've always been for posting it and doing interviews. I just, I think it's gonna be impossible to find someone objective in this case. So that's my own, that's my concern, and I can easily be backed off that if someone felt differently.
No, I absolutely agree, I mean, that's absolutely the concern, whether it's somebody, because ultimately, if we go through the appointment process, no matter how we appoint, I mean, we can interview fourteen people, thirteen of them could be on one side of the, the issue, the one person could be on the other, we appoint the one. I mean, we're gonna get pegged with.
We'll get killed in my own way.
Right, so I mean, it really doesn't matter. But, you know, so I, I absolutely hear what you're saying, in, in, in an ideal space, I'd pick my neighbor two houses down, I already talked to him on the way, he's super neutral on so many different things, smart person that would be willing to listen to both sides, but I, I mean, I just don't know how you find somebody truly. But, you know, with the interview process, asking the right questions, getting a good enough vibe, having that discussion, I think, you know, I think we could do a pretty decent job with that. And if ultimately, at the end of the day, we're like, holy crap, there's no way, then we could default to, I mean, even having a backup process, too. I'd be open to, but, I mean, who knows, maybe nobody wants to even jump on.
That's possible.
Are we allowed, sorry, are we allowed to be able to do the interview process, and if we don't care for any of them, then go to an appointment?
Kristen Forsman just nodded at me, saying she wanted to be appointed right now. Got it, no.
Is, all right, I mean, obviously, we don't have to decide now. I mean, like I said, I really think we ought to have a full council with Amanda here to have this, or to make a decision how we proceed. We still have to decide whether we're accepting the resignation or not. If we are, and someone wants to make a motion, we can do that.
Motion to accept twenty-three, twenty-eight, accepting council members' resignation.
It's a motion by Kate.
I'll second that, can we have a little bit more, or can we discuss before or after vote, I don't really care.
Uh, second by Josh, and then we'll, and then further discussion before we vote.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's, do we, do we have any upcoming votes, like, I think in sense of urgency or timing of things that we need, that super majority, that, that, that bigger thing, more than just a simple majority? Is there anything that we are at risk for, without having that fifth person quickly? If we don't make a decision now, to get something posted, to get the process moving, I'm just worried about that.
Purple Rain? Purple Rain? Yeah, we already did that.
So nothing big?
We'll have a, we'll have a city-led, so city-initiated, public improvement project involving special assessments. And I think that requires a four-fifths, or, you know, extra majority. So the timing of that, I suppose, could, we haven't had the improvement hearing, so that's probably at least a month away.
Okay.
Give you an idea of timeframe.
So Andrea, I couldn't hear your response remotely here.
Sorry, my response was a non-issue.
So with a four-fifths, my recollection is under state statute, if you only have four council people, and you have a vacancy at that time, all of those measures go against four as the total council until that vacancy is filled.
That's correct.
And then, just for clarification, tied votes on most all things, you know, we don't just trump to Mr. Mayor here, right? Most things, you know, if it's tied, it, it doesn't pass, essentially, yeah, yeah.
Correct, so that's the biggest risk, is if you think that there's gonna be the likelihood of even splits, so it requires prognostication on the part of the council on any items, that would be the biggest risk.
Comfortable voting, then, since we have a motion and a second? All right, all in favor of resolution twenty-three, twenty-eight? Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. We need to pick an acting mayor.
I would like to pick Josh Berg.
I'll second it. Motion by Kate, second by myself, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Josh is the new acting mayor. How many times have you filled that role?
Twice, this is the second time, I think.
Is it? I thought it was third or fourth.
I don't know.
All right. Uh, onto reports. Anything for administration, Tom?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Public Works, we have our Public Works guy here.
Nothing, he was busy.
He just showed up for, well, you had people here, yeah, yeah, all right. Police Department.
Come on.
Engineering.
I have no report.
Okay. Community Development.
I was informed today by the building official that Quick Trip is two weeks ahead of schedule.
Hey.
Woo!
All right. Anything for Parks? Probably not. Uh, C C E C.
At our last meeting, we discussed fire rescue days. We have a band coming in after the parade, we'll have music in the park, and some food trucks that we will invite in, and some activities for the kids.
All right.
Do we need to increase the budget at all?
I'm never against that.
Can we mute, Tom?
No, I mean, realistically.
Realistically, the band is, I mean, last year, without anything, we just had the parade, no inflatables, we were approximately two thousand dollars under our budget. We have inflatables coming, we have a band coming, so we will probably exceed our budget by some.
However, we also received a thousand dollar donation from the Chamber of Commerce to assist with civic and community events. So while we might exceed the expense line item, our revenues are greater than expected as well.
Can I just comment personally, and not speaking on behalf of anybody else on the council, unless they want to? I mean, I, not that I give you a blank check, but man, like, I would just say, I think you would have the, you, you have the support of myself. I think we, as a city, do a really good job budgeting in so many different areas. We end up sweeping money at the end of the year, most years, almost every year that I've been on council, we have, and I think this is one area that if you happen to overspend and you happen to go above and beyond, I think there'd probably be a lot of grace and permission to do so, even if, right, it's not in the budget, so, yeah.
Thank you.
I'm gonna hold you to the, Josh during budget season.
You got it, put a special spot in the box.
It was just Josh. Other committee reports, there's nothing for, nothing for scale, next, scale meetings in two weeks, scale execs next week. Tom, do you have anything for service delivery?
I do not.
Does anyone, since Bryce left, has anyone gone to the?
I went to the last one and reported on it at the last meeting, but we should think about that, as, who's that gonna default to?
Yeah, well, I guess we gotta figure out who's the next council person is, but when is the next meeting?
Thursday, the eleventh, and I have it on my calendar already, so.
So you're gonna go?
I guess I'll go to that one, and then we can figure it out.
Sounds good. Any discussion by council? More motions?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Kate, second by myself, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, means adjourned.